Good evening and welcome to the February 24th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in executive session since 6:00 discussing personnel issues. We are now in open session and the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go on to introductions, just a couple of logistical things. We are being videotaped, so if you do choose to speak, just know that you will be on, you will be recorded. And for participation in government students, anyone here participating in government students, your requirement is to stay until 9:00. If the meeting gets over before then, you should come up and put your names on one of the rosters and make, if you require Board of Education member's signature, any of the six Board members who are up here can sign your sheet. Okay. We'll proceed to introductions, please.
Joanne Cunningham.
Diane Steever.
Michael Cooper.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Charmaine Riedesinger.
Lynn Lenhart.
Christine.
Judy Keough.
And Mr. Matt Downey, who's the President of the Board, is out of town this evening. So we'll proceed now to item number two, the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion, please, as recommended, the Board of Education approve the minutes of the February 3rd, 2016 regular Board meeting?
Some move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any unopposed? That carries. Now we're on to item number three, the Student Senate Report. Does anyone hear from Student Senate? No? Okay, then we will go to item number four, the Interim Superintendent's Report. Ms. Monroe, please. Does she want to submit? Okay. You. Put a good part of the board report.
Okay. All right, thank you. I have a few things to announce this evening. The first is we want to recognize a few students who are, hopefully, I think they're all here this evening, recognize students, three students who've been nominated for the 2016 United States Presidential Scholar Program. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established in 1964 by executive order of the President to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished graduating seniors. In 1979, the program was expanded to recognize students who demonstrate exceptional scholarship and talent in the visual, creating, and performing arts. In 2015, the program was expanded once again to recognize students who demonstrate ability and accomplishment in career and technical fields. Annually, up to 161 students are chosen from among outstanding graduating seniors to become U.S. Presidential Scholars, one of the nation's highest honors for high school seniors, and we have three students who I'd like to recognize this evening, Salin Gumaestep, Eric Wolfberg, and Iris Cho. They could come on up, please.
And I'd actually ask the Board of Education if you'd like to come up and we'll congratulate the students if the Board members would like to come up and give pens for them. So just give us a second to come up front here. We'd like to understand. So actually, we're going to have the Board members behind you for a second so you can shake all our hands and then we'll take a picture. It's a process. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Can we get a quick photo? Will that be okay?
Would you like us there or here?
Right here is fine and we'll get you right here and it's going to be a little tough.
I was going to say tell people about.
Yeah, why don't you girls, yeah, come back here. Just make sure I can see you.
That's all right. It's one way.
If you can see me, I can see you, so.
Yeah.
We're going to take three. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you so much.
I also wanted to follow up from our last meeting with the food service presentation, or was food service about the school lunch, high school lunch program? And our Food Services Director did follow up with a few things as well as Mr. Landry. So I wanted to just let the Board know what we're addressing in response to that presentation and the discussion that followed. So Mr. Landry did address the concern that was raised about students not being permitted to eat in classes if they didn't have a lunch, so that's been addressed already. The other issue that came up were the long lunch lines, particularly between certain periods. And Ms. Isner is doing a few things to address that, that we think will help to move things along, in that they're always grab-and-go options and sometimes students want the hot lunch entree, so it's, sometimes there is a line, but the lines have gotten better. There is a menu which is fast casual, like build-your-own burrito. This takes some extra time, but hopefully, they've added a second server, so that will help expedite those lines as well. The coffee shop is now open between 7:00 and 1:00 p.m., and the time that she notices is quite busy is between periods two and three. So she's looking at opening a snack shop a little bit earlier, 9:20 rather than 10:00, to get a person to staff that, so that will hopefully address some of those concerns. There's also two healthy vending machines, and she's looking to move one of those from the cafeteria to another location on the second floor in the high school. So if we're able to do that, that would allow students to stop and grab something at the vending machine that's still a healthy snack between classes. And also looking to see if there's systems that would allow pre-ordering through their smartphone for a ticket system for the kitchen. And the other piece with the vending machines I should mention is that there are, looking at students to be able to use their lunch account money from the vending machines with their account code. Currently, that's not an option, but hopefully will be, so that would help move things along as well. And two other quick announcements is just tomorrow is the BOU Spelling Bee, if you want to come out and have some entertainment. And Friday night is Girls Night Out here at the high school, and female Board members are invited to stop by if you'd like. Sorry, Mr. Cooper.
Good point.
And that's my report.
Great. Any questions? Thank you very much. We are now moving on to item number five, the Board of Education Report, which tonight we're actually doing three parts. The first part will be a report, update on the search for the superintendent. The second part will be Board members' announcements, and the third part will be actual committee reports. So if I could ask Dr. Chuck Dietrich, the Capital Region, Capital District Region, Bosse Superintendent, to give us an update, please, on the search process.
Thank you. Good evening. Good to see you all. Just a fairly quick update on where we are with the search process. The process has really moved from one stage to the other within the last week or two because the application period closed. So I'll back up a little bit just to when the application period was open. During that period of time, we had 30 inquiries into the position. That was either through outreach from us or candidates contacting us. From the 30 contacts that we had, some were longer than others, we ended up with 17 completed applications. Of the 17 completed applications, over the course of today through last week, four withdrew their application. So we ended up with 13 applications of people that were interested in continuing with the process. The Board met. The Board was able to view all of the people that completed applications that were interested in continuing, and we are in the process currently of reaching out to those candidates in hopes that they'll come in to meet with the Board for an initial conversation. The next part of it, which is running parallel, is the community process as well. Tonight, Dr. Wells, Lynn Wells, my Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and I met with your community group. You have 28 incredibly involved, interested individuals who were selected to participate. And usually, just to give you an idea, usually it takes about 20, 25 minutes to get people ready and break into questions. They were extremely involved and they were extremely interested in this process. So we met for over an hour and then broke up into small groups, and the groups are meeting to develop questions and to develop familiarity with each other. One of the things that the Board made clear in the beginning was that you wanted community input, so I just back up and remind, really, we're using three methods of community input. There was open forums and a survey, which was done. There was the nomination process for community members to nominate individuals, and that did occur. And the final is the actual interview process, where the community stakeholders in heterogeneous groups will meet with the candidates after the Board meets with a first round of candidates and does an initial vetting of them. And then from there, that will take place at the end of March, and then the community members will meet with the Board and the Board will decide on finalists. So, right now, we are smack dab right in the middle of the process, but this is the time when it's going to become, a lot of your time is going to be putting into nights doing these interviews and time checking into these candidates. So if there are questions from Board members, or anyone else for that matter, I'd be very happy to answer them for you.
Any questions? I just want to clarify, so the community members, are they meeting all the candidates who the Board selects for initial interviews, or just the finalists selected by the Board?
They're meeting who you choose to move along to them.
Okay.
The candidates in your initial screening, you may decide that, for whatever reason, I'm not going to give a number, but for whatever reason, this person will not fit the bill for you as the next superintendent. As a result, if, because as we always say, it's the Board, the Board makes the final decision on this, it's the Board's most important decision. If there's somebody who you cannot live with as your next superintendent, there's no point moving them along to a community group for them to vet that person. So you'll do the initial screening, and then the community, then you'll do the final screening.
And in terms of the community group for the public, it involves faculty, staff, students, and community members.
Yes.
And we had far more people come forward and volunteer than we were able to select.
Yes. And one of the other, and I think it's just important to note that one of the things that's being done different this time is the heterogeneous grouping of the groups that are doing the interviews, that normally in school districts, very often, you'll have a group of parents, a group of teachers, a group of administrators. By putting the people together, it really does create a dynamic which is different. And when candidates meet with a heterogeneous group like that, it's very hard to, it's very hard to fit your answer to the group that you're meeting with. So I think, I think the strength of your community group is really going to shine because of the heterogeneous grouping as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just, again, want to thank the, you know, all the members of those committees, you know, for their participation and willingness to spend the time, because it will be, you know, some time on their part, too, to do this and to do it effectively and carefully and, you know, appreciate that they're doing that and also, will also appreciate their comments and input in the process.
Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you all again. Thank you.
You can stay for a meeting if you'd like.
Well, I'd love to. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Board Member Reports. Anyone have anything to comment on?
Oh, actually, there is something. I don't know who's attending the Capitol Conference this weekend, Sunday and Monday, if anybody is, but again, main issues will be, you know, the finances, that'll be probably the first thing, meeting with legislators, talking about, you know, eliminating the GEA and increasing foundation aid and, you know, issues with the property tax cap. I mean, I say more about that. Anyhow.
How many people are going to that this year?
We go this year, isn't it usually March?
Yeah, it's usually, it's later.
It's usually a little bit later, but it seemed like they moved it back a little bit because of the timeliness of when decisions were going to be being made downtown, so it seemed to be better before final decisions were made, rather than at the end of the process.
Do we usually sometimes have meeting schedules on that Monday?
Actually, Brittany had been in touch with our representatives to schedule time. We've heard back from one, and I think, like you had said you would be interested, and myself, on Monday, but we haven't heard back from the others. The superintendent conference is the following week, too, when there's a lobby date, so it gets a little tricky for them trying to schedule everyone, I think, but.
So is that meeting Monday, the one that you were having?
The one that we've confirmed is Monday, I think, at 11:00, but we haven't heard back from two others.
Okay, I might be able to return that.
Okay, so we'll let you know by the end of the week, definitely, who's confirmed and the time.
Okay. Great, thank you. I was able to go to a legal program on the legal rights of transgendered students, put on by the Gersio Law Firm, and they gave us an information packet about relevant court cases. And also, there's an example of a very specific policy around transgendered students, and their opinion was you can either go as a district using DASSA as a guide or develop a very specific policy. So I'm going to put this to the Policy Committee and they can look at it and see if it's something that, and also, obviously, the interim superintendent, also, is that something needed here, a very specific policy, or should we just proceed as the way we have?
It's interesting, I was at a, in Washington, at a National School Board Association Policy and Resolutions Committee, and that, you know, that entire issue came up, and it's interesting how different states look at different issues, and even having in the definition, I recommended using the DASSA as a, as a model for including all those, you know, different names. And, you know, to have the discussion about all these things with students. And it's interesting, because a couple days later, South Dakota passed legislation that requires anyone, whatever, one is born as is, what, restrooms and how a child be recognized in school. And so the people all throughout the country are kind of looking at things differently, which is interesting.
Yeah, absolutely. The other thing is I was able to go to the girls' sectional basketball game on Monday, and although the team will not move forward, it was a great game and they had a great season, just want to appreciate their efforts and the efforts and the direction of their coaches. I want to acknowledge that Nell Harper Lee died last week, and for any of you, I assume almost every student in this high school has read To Kill a Mockingbird, and she was the author of that book, so I just want to acknowledge her contribution to our community and also to the literary life of most Americans or many Americans. And the last thing I'll say is there is going to be a documentary on Monday at 8:00, broadcast uninterrupted on the National Geographic Channel, on the life of the young girl Malala, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Yousavazeh, who was a Pakistani girl who advocated for girls' education, was almost killed. She won the Nobel Peace Prize at the age, I believe, of 17. And as we consider the issues that face us as a district, and for those who, so much is given and so much is available, I can only hope that we use that for positive encouragement for all of our students in the high school. So, I know, I hope there are no meetings scheduled for Monday for the Board so that I can watch that. So, that's the end of my report.
I know Jody mentioned the BOU, big fundraiser, but this is a wonderful organization that supports kids that, in all kinds of facets, you know, helping them with some of those extracurriculars. I've gotten so many emails, I'm going to be out of town, and I think I'm a good speller, so I'm really upset that I'm going to be out of town. But they have gift baskets, they have a silent auction, they have a raffle, they have just all kinds of stuff. So, members of the community, it sounds like it's an unbelievable event. I'm really sorry I can't make it, and a great fundraiser, and they're doing a great job with marketing it, so.
Right, I think an S and N went out today.
Yeah, there've been a couple of, I mean, Facebook posts and SNNs and stuff like that, and maybe next year, we can have like a Board of Education team.
I know, we said that the year before, and we didn't do it.
I know, we didn't do it, but.
I'll do the grammar bee, but I don't know about spelling.
The spelling bee's actually, it was really fun. I participated in it last year, it was great.
It sounded like it was great.
It was a lot of fun, and I think it's asked this year.
Yeah, and you're in a team, so it's not as, you know, scarier, you know, not, you're not on the spot to actually have to produce the spelling of those really hard words, so.
And the faculty really gets into it. They're very competitive as to who is going to win the spelling bee.
Yeah, and I know there's.
Although, Community Team won last year, so.
There's town board members who attend, it's really a good event. I also went to the first sectional game for the varsity hockey team, and it was also a heartbreaker of a, of a game. And Dave, cover your ears. Dave's son, it was the goalie for the team that beat us, Sal, he played a hell of a game, but we were very, very disappointed because we, of course, had beaten them before and had a really good record, but your son played exceptionally well. So a heartbreaker of the end of the season, but there's always next year.
But Dave's son won't be there next year.
Right, he won't be there next year, so.
There's also the Lab School, the Lab School barbecue is coming up.
Yeah, it's on March 5th.
Yep, next Saturday.
Right. That's right, we have another Board meeting for him, I just also plug on.
We've done a really good job of advertising it this year, the number of SNNs that have gone out, the signs that are all over the community at the middle school, so I'm hoping it's going to be a great event.
Great.
Just two other quick things. One is, I'm really interested in the legal issues on the transgender. There've been a lot of clips about Boards of Education dealing with this issue with respect to bathrooms and kind of policy, so maybe it is something that we talk about at some point, you know, and kind of examine. And then the other thing I would mention is, there's lots of, just for the Board's knowledge, lots and lots of discussion I've seen in social media in Bethlehem about start times of school. Lots of people attaching studies and data about all the potential benefits of later start times for high school students in particular. So I would imagine this issue might, you know, generate some interest that might come our way at some point, so I can circulate some stuff that I've been reading also.
Which, can I ask Ms. Monroe to comment on something? The Board will be developing or reviewing the calendar for next year in the next few weeks, but there is a discussion about breaks for next year. If you could just clarify, when you talked about discussion in Bethlehem, I knew this was being discussed.
That February vacation, that we're not having February vacation next year, but we are having February vacation next year, so everyone can.
We proved the Bosse's calendar Monday night.
Please stop the rumors that Bethlehem is spreading around the entire Capital Region community. Yes, there will be a February vacation next year.
Good, thank you.
And we should have the calendar for review in the next, as you said, in the next couple weeks.
Thank you. And then Committee Reports, please. Can I ask Lynn if you could talk about the Audit Committee, please?
Right, we had a lot of committee meeting on February 4th, and we discussed a couple of internal audit reports. One was on retiree healthcare benefits and an audit, internal audit on the Capitol Project. And there were recommendations made by the internal auditor, and, you know, the staff followed through on, you know, on taking care of some issues. So that worked out well, and we'll be looking at what, at the next meeting, what will be the next topic or area that we want to have an internal audit on. An internal audit has to do with, you know, the risk within an organization in different compartments, and the auditor looks at it and makes recommendations of how we can improve how we do things.
Great.
And, and then also, we also are preparing, we're prepared an RFP to submit for an external auditor. Law requires us to do it at least every five years. You can keep the same auditor eventually, but at least you can have the opportunity of hiring someone else if you so desire, but you have to do it every, at least every five years, so we're in the process of doing that now.
Thank you. And there is a committee that's putting together an evaluation tool for the superintendent. I think various iterations of this committee have functioned for about two and a half years, but we have finally come up with a draft document that we put on the portal or the Board docs for the Board to review, if people could come with their feedback for next meeting. The evaluation has several standards and then examples of indicators, not a comprehensive list of indicators for each standard. The scoring sheet mechanism was not provided for Board members yet, we'll go over that next, but if people could come with feedback on standards and the indicators at the next meeting, it would be helpful.
They also got the timeframe.
Yes, timeframe for evaluating the superintendent, the different steps and stages, so.
Right, we wanted to ensure that it's done before a new Board would take place in July, so.
So any feedback on?
Before the end of June.
Yeah, feedback on that would also be appreciated, so. All right, moving on, yes, to item number six, we have two presentations this evening. The first is the State of the Schools Address, led by Ms. Monroe.
So tonight, we're going to begin with an overview of the state of the schools, and then we will transition to the beginning of our budget presentations and overview of the initial budget outlook for the year. Earlier this year, the Board adopted goals aligned to support the district's longstanding commitment to deliver knowledge, character, and value to students in the community. Throughout the year, Board meeting presentations have generally fell under one of these three headings. Tonight, we'll look at how knowledge, character, and value are linked in what we do on a daily basis and determine the district's direction over the next several years. We'll begin by taking a look at our academics. We are consistently ranked at the top of the Capital Region rankings, and we have also moved steadily through the top 10 in upstate school districts. The rankings in the prior slides generally have a lot to do with state assessments, and if you recall, we had a presentation earlier this year about the 3 through 8 assessments as well as the region's results. This year, results were skewed by opt-outs, you can see we had about 20% opt-out across the district. However, our students still perform well above the state average, which you can see highlighted in yellow on the far columns of each for ELA and math. The 7th and 8th grade results, if you recall, we did eliminate double testing for accelerated math students, which is why you see the two different percentages, because the state did not account for those in their accountability. However, if you factor in those students who took the region's results, you can see the percentages are very similar to the other grade level results. However, it's not just about test scores. We've also increased our focus on STEM learning across the district. We have a new and popular computer science class at the high school, which was achieved through a National Science Foundation grant partnered with Siena. Next year, we had one section that ran this year, next year, we anticipate two to three sections of that course will run. We've also renovated a lot of our technology space and upgraded our equipment. We've added an additional coding class to part of the middle school's computer literacy curriculum. And you can see that U.S. News and World Report placed the high school in the top 1% of high schools nationwide for STEM. Pictured at the upper left is one of our students, who actually was, he used a 3D printer to build a robotic arm, which was among the top designs at the Regional Science Olympiad earlier this month, and hopefully, you've heard, or you will be hearing soon, we do have a 3D printing competition for students that will be ongoing and announced winners in the spring. While most of us in this room would be considered digital natives, or digital immigrants, sorry, most of our students are considered digital natives. Technology has and continues to be a part of their social and academic life. That's why our district technology plan seeks to provide seamless integration of technology in the classroom. Thanks to the recently completed Capitol Project and continued support for the budget by our, by our community, we have state-of-the-art networking and wireless infrastructure, interactive classroom projection technology in all of our elementary classrooms and many of our secondary classrooms. We have Google Chromebooks and grade. We have Google Chromebooks in grade 5 on a one-to-one ratio, and hopefully, next year, we'll be expanding that to grade 4. However, it's not all about the technology hardware and software. It's about innovation. The technology department's student help desk is a trendsetter. A dozen school districts around the region and beyond have asked how they can replicate its success in the district. You can see the student help desk provides students with real-world technology and work experience. They help to support staff on multiple platforms. They have supported our students in our one-to-one initiatives, which we have several of those throughout the district. And they also help to support professional development activities. You can see in the blue, our ticket response time, meaning ticket responses are put in when there's a problem with a computer or printer across the district. Before our student help desk existed, it was an average of one to two week wait. Now, with the student help desk, it's down to an average of two to three days. As you know, we also have a Smart Schools grant. Bethlehem is going to get a little over $2 million. We've been awarded for that. The funds do not expire, and access to funds does require a Smart Schools Improvement Plan. A committee of district stakeholders will actually meet, beginning in the spring through next year, and will look at a way to maximize the use of these funds. The plan will then be presented to the community and the Board of Education for final approval. And the funds, as I said, remain existing until they're drawn down, so we have ample time to look at how we use those funds. Certainly, while technology has its place, there's no substitution for our instructional staff who are prepared with proven tools to boost our fundamental learning, especially at our youngest levels. A few years ago, we implemented Teachers College's writing units. If you recall, we've had some presentations on that. And we are now in our second full year of implementation of a K-8 writing curriculum, which is consistent and creates a great venue for students to continue to expand their writing from year to year. This year, we had our K-5 grade-level teams pilot Teachers College Reading Curriculum, which integrates with the writing program. And through that pilot and through professional development, the teachers have decided with the ELA cabinet that we will be implementing that program, so that will be fully implemented for K-5 in the fall. You've heard a lot about response to intervention. And if you recall, last year, we added, through the budget process, five additional full-time intervention specialists, which have been a huge addition to the program and a huge success for many of our students who struggle. We continually assess our curriculums and to allow our early learners to get the support they need. This year, for the first time in many, many years, we've actually been able to service all of our students who have been identified as needing some additional intervention at the elementary level. The next step from response to intervention is our special education program. For students who need additional support beyond that RTI model or an AIS model, our special ed program provides continuation of education through resource rooms, related services, co-taught classrooms, and different content areas. The district also provides intensive skills and skills programs for students in K through 12. The intensive skills program has only been in existence since 2007, and those students will be moving to the high school next year. So that will be something you'll hear a little more about in our presentation in special education in the coming weeks. The arts are so valuable and important to our students, our staff, our community here in the district. We strive to provide a strong foundation for all students, and you can see some of the awards, very prestigious award, that many of our artists and musicians have received over the last year. And we mentioned, some of you mentioned, some of our sports teams this last year. We certainly encourage students to be involved in extracurricular activities, including athletics. Every Bethlehem team, if you recall, in the fall was named a Scholar-Athlete Team by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. Our efforts are often revealed at the high school level, and here are some other accomplishments that our students have achieved in recent years. You can see we have many co-curricular activities, many AP results, and the high school was named one of the top 500 schools in the nation by Newsweek. So we certainly can be proud of our many accomplishments of our students and the encouragement of our staff and community and parents. Recently, Bethlehem was ranked number one for New York State College readiness data using a measure called the aspirational performance measure. And what that simply means is that we had the highest percentage of students who scored an 80 or better on the math region's exam and a 75 or better on the region's exams compared to local districts. Now, as you know, you've seen some of these results in the prior assessment of school report card information about our AP results. We provide numerous AP opportunities for students to take. There is no criteria for a student to take these. We have open enrollment. And the benefit to students is certainly dollar amounts that can benefit them in college. If you take the class of 2015 and the University of Albany as an example, credits earned by our students prior to graduation were worth an estimated $1.3 million. And I think many of you have heard that there, we have so many students who go to college and can reduce their time they have to pay in college and spend in college by, a semester is not uncommon for many of our students. For some students, however, they prefer to look at the world of work, and we provide numerous opportunities for students to get involved in CTE programs. It's important to note that many of our programs provide students with a tremendous start to the workforce. For example, a welder with a State Department of Transportation certification can earn $20.50 per hour upon graduation. 51% of available jobs in New York State are so-called middle-skills jobs, the same jobs these students are being trained to do while still in high school. And of course, we've heard a lot, we've talked a lot about the importance of character education at every age. So to highlight a few examples of what our students in our schools offer, Slingerlands in the Middle School collected goods for the Marilack Family Shelter. At Glenmott, 5th graders sit with kindergarten students on the bus to help alleviate new school jitters for our younger students. At Hammagrell, students created Valentine's Day cards for soldiers overseas. At Elsmere, 5th graders volunteer to work in the intensive skills class in a reverse mainstreaming effort known as Heroes. At the high school, a new club known as No Place for Hate has students and staff working together to create a safe, accepting, learning environment and culture. At Eagle, students are spearheading a community outreach effort for the Ronald McDonald House and Juvenile Diabetes Foundation. We also value our longstanding partnerships with our PTAs, PTOs, our district-affiliated organizations such as the BCAA, BOU, BMA, and BCCF. Most recently, we have also been working on new community partnerships with local businesses, such as having our middle school and high school students beta-test a new app called Passport for Good that is in development. One of our community members has been working on this app in the RPI incubator program, and our students have the opportunity to participate in this process. We also have established a partnership with Garden Bistro, where we will be working in conjunction with them to launch a program in the fall where they will use produce from our gardens in their restaurant and will in turn help us with contributions for the garden supplies as well as provide our students with culinary and restaurant experiences and internships. Along with our students and staff, all of these organizations and other community groups reap the benefits of our recently completed $20 million facilities improvement project that was on time and under budget. We have been able to take advantage of generous building aid to make needed improvements with minimal impact to local taxpayers. It will be important for us to keep sight of the importance of maintaining our facilities and grounds for the future. We've tried to do the same with our operating budget, yet the state doesn't make it easy. You can see that our state aid projected for next year, and Judy will touch on this further in her presentation, is still below the levels we received in 2009-10. Part of the reason for this, obviously, and we've talked about this a lot, is the gap elimination. The gap elimination lost to Bethlehem over five years is approximately $3,655 per student. You can see that we're still projecting a $1.3 million gap elimination dollar amount. This is our enrollment from this past October. Our enrollment is about 40, just over 4,600. Although we have seen a slight decline in enrollment, it certainly does not counter the impact of the loss of funding over the last several years. The other thing that I think is important to note on the enrollment, if you look at the K-5 numbers, you will see that there are some wide ranges in numbers across buildings and grade levels. This will be one area we should consider addressing as we move forward so that we're better able to maximize the spaces we have across the districts and balance the class sizes. As I mentioned, our enrollment, even with a slight decline, certainly has not kept up with the rate of reduction in staff. You can see that our enrollment has dropped about 9%, yet our staff level has, is double that in a reduction. Last year, we were fortunate in that we were able to start closing this gap, state reducing class sizes, and we were able to restore some student programs. Obviously, restoration of the GEA would bring this gap closer. State support not only impacts staffing and programs, it also impacts our taxpayers. Over six years, the state support of Bethlehem schools made a dramatic downward shift from funding 34.2% of the budget in 2009-10 to only supporting 24.9 in 2014-15. Last year's boost in aid certainly helped. The final state budget will reveal whether or not that trend continues. The district has certainly worked hard to contain our costs. You can see, over 10 years of budgets, the percent of annual increases here, over the last five years, the average has been 1.3%. The district continues to receive the support of the community for its budget, and 2012-13 is, if you recall, we did, that was the first year of the tax cap, and our voters did support that. This community values its schools, and we are proud to offer value in return. Here is the latest data we have from state ed showing the relative value of the education that we provide compared to New York State average in similar districts. You can see the per pupil costs in Bethlehem are more than $6,600 less than costs in similar districts. During this period, the cost per pupil in Bethlehem grew a total of 3.25%, while the per pupil cost in growth statewide was 9%, and in similar districts was 12.5%. That's my presentation. I'll open it up for any questions the board may have at this time.
Yeah, Lynn, please.
It's certainly a great report and a very comprehensive report, but I do have a question on the enrollment, because we had looked at the long-range planning report, and I thought the enrollment was starting to level off and come up, but if you look at the K-1 and 2, each of those grade levels adds up to less than 300 students, I believe. And, you know, when you look at the high school graduating class being 417 this year, it just, it's, I mean, that's, as those numbers go through, I mean, we're going to be declining, it seems like, a little bit more than I really thought we would be.
I think that judging by the kindergarten registration currently, our numbers are up from what the projected numbers were. The other piece of that, that we do tend to get students who register in 6th grade for middle school and also in 9th grade, so those numbers do bump up generally from students who may be in private schools for elementary. So you see a trend that we have, if you recall, over the last few years, reduced sections at the middle school because of budget impact, obviously, looking at that more carefully, but also because of enrollment. So that's something that we are monitoring. Right now, in regards to the elementary, it looks to be that the number of the staffing level would remain the same or could potentially, based on the numbers we're seeing, increase slightly.
In regards to the RTI program, I know it's in its early development stages. Are you thinking about expanding it maybe to the 6th through 8th level?
The, you can do, we do some forms of RTI at the middle school, but it's very different because of the schedule. It doesn't work quite the same, so we still have, I would say, more traditional AIS model where students are pulled out or scheduled into a remedial class. The one thing I would say that we've added to be more along the lines of an RTI model is we've added more assessment data, snapshot data, that's normed, nationally normed, to help give us a better indication of reading levels. And we've also developed some math assessments similar to what we've done at the elementary, so we've got some norm reference data to use. So that's probably the closest to RTI, but in regards to who's providing the intervention, the classroom teacher, a pull-out teacher, or very small one-to-one instruction, it's not really possible at the middle school like it is at the elementary.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, Joanne. So that slide that gets into the New York State assessment, kind of year to year, we have 2013-14 school year, and then we have 2014-15. So the ELA scores for Bethlehem got worse. This is slide four. I mean, I know we're above the New York State average, but from 2013-14, we did worse. And you're bullet at the bottom, and you kind of linked the possibility that the larger opt-out number was the result of that. Do we know that for sure, and how would we know that?
Well, when we looked at the opt-out rates, there's a few, there's a few things that you have to factor in on these assessments. The opt-out rates absolutely grade-to-grade could be dependent upon your overall results, depending upon the number of students who opt out and what type of students opt out. The other piece that last year was not accounted for, that if there were students who completed part one of the exam and then realized, "Oh, my friends aren't taking this exam. I'm not taking the rest of it either." I mean, they're middle school students. And that's, they still received a score. So we don't, you don't know how many of those students who, after seeing many of their peers not taking the assessment, were influenced by, "How serious do I take this?" not taking the assessment, were influenced by, how serious do I take this? The bigger factor with the assessments is that we've not gotten all of the data results returned to us, so we don't necessarily know what areas of those assessments students struggle with. We, they've gotten, last year, they produced a little more information for districts, but we, we used to get a very direct report that showed us item by item where students fell short. We don't have that information. The other twist with the assessments, I guess, and we're going to see it for a while because now they're going with new vendors for the assessments, is that you can't vertically align those, those assessments year to year to know that, for example, a third grade assessment is equivalent to fourth grade, so you should be seeing similar results because of the way they're generated, but more importantly, by the way they're scaled and scored. For example, in one grade level, a student could miss one question, and that would drop that student into a level three.
Right. So all of that tells me that these, these scores are meaningless, or it's, it's, we can't compare year to year, or we have difficulty, we can't figure out how to do better? Is that what, all of that?
I would say, in recent years, that's true.
Okay.
Dave, do you want to make a comment on that?
Well, if you recall from our presentation in September, although our ELA numbers seemingly went down, when you look at the way we compare to schools across the state, we were actually on average the 92nd percentile for ELA, and even though our math numbers went up, we were in a lower percentile. So you, you can't really look at year-to-year comparisons, but what you can do is look at sort of what percentile you'll fall in for any given year, because there's no, because the tests change each year, the difficulty level isn't consistent. So, and, and just anecdotally, in speaking with teachers, they felt that last year's exam itself was much, much harder than the prior year. But again, our, our standing was approximately 92nd percentile statewide, so our students, even though our overall percentage went down, our students did very, very well.
So are we staying the same in the percentile?
In ELA, we actually went slightly up.
Okay.
In math, we stayed about the same.
It does beg the question of, you know, what's the purpose of this? And how do you, how do you, how are you supposed to measure yourself if it's so complicated to kind of have a baseline and then kind of look year to year? And also, look at where you're weak and help, you know, these kids progress so that they're not weak in those areas?
I mean, that's, that's been the arg, yeah, that's been the argument of educators for several years now, in that if we're giving an assessment, the purpose of the assessment is to really determine how students are doing and how their performance is reflecting our instruction, and what do we need to address. The data that we receive back from those tests doesn't do it.
Right.
So hopefully, with the new agreement they have with Questar, the new vendor, we will be getting that information, because without it, you're exactly right, the information and the, the purpose of the test is really useless and meaningless.
Well, it's almost like a snapshot of a moving picture, and as the picture continues to move, the students are still required to take the test, so it's.
Right.
Yes. And we're required to administer it.
And do we think that our, what do we think's going to happen this year with the opt-out?
I don't know.
Is it going to be worse?
I don't.
I mean, do we think that this is going to?
I haven't heard much about it.
It's been quiet this year.
It's been very quiet.
Okay.
Didn't the ELAs in 2013, 14, they added either another section or additional questions, which also reduced the amount of time because there was more?
They had, they have embedded field test questions in those exams, and so you're not sure which of those are field test questions and how they perhaps skew the results of the exam, because there was a lot of concern, not just in that exam, but the last few years, about students not being able to finish, particularly the ELA exam. So for, if there's EL, if there's field test questions embedded in those exams and they don't finish the exam, and three of the questions they don't finish are actual test items, that could make a huge difference in their overall performance.
Yeah, I just thought I had remembered that they had added additional, like, a longer session.
It got, it did get longer. I can't remember if it was 13, 14 or 12, 13, but.
I have one other question, one other question, and it's on slide 30, and I've wondered this before, and I'm finally asking. So we compare ourselves, this is the one that shows the education and value, so we say per pupil costs in Bethlehem are 17,000 compared to similar districts, 24. But what do, what do we mean by similar? Is it tax load? Is it size?
Similar districts, generally, we use, yeah, similar in size, similar demographics for the community are generally how you use that, what's your free and reduced lunch rates?
Okay.
What's your special education rates? What's your minority population rate? So there's a bunch of factors that go into that, but in, there's a list actually of who we compare with, and we, generally, when we compare our regions' results, AP results, three through eight results, we use those districts as a comparison.
Okay, but we could be conceivably compared to a similar socio-economic size district in Westchester County, which has a really high tax rate and high tax, high cost of living. Higher everything, okay.
Thank you. Thank you again, and for your team who helped put together a great presentation. Now, we do have another presentation, but let me, while Ms. Kehoe is moving over to her budget overview presentation, we do have a finance item that involves accepting several donations from the community. I just want to ask, while we're transitioning here, if the community members are here, is Mr. Paul Spanhauer here, or Ms. Kathleen Lake, or, let's see, the, the green team, and Mr. Paul Wing? Is anyone here? Any of those folks here?
Well, Mark is here.
Oh, and Mark, are you here for the green team thing, or are you sitting for the whole meeting?
Oh, no, I'm sitting for the green.
Okay, great. So we don't need to move that item. I thought I saw some familiar faces here, and I didn't want them to have to sit through the budget presentation if we wanted to acknowledge them publicly, but they're not here, so they're just keep going.
Do people try not to be offended by that?
We've done it in the past, moving up presentation, accepting donations, and I wanted to offer that same option if they were actually here, but, all right. So that gave a nice time to transition to our budget overview presentation by Ms. Kehoe. Which, you've got to be excited to have the budget, it's kickoff! And this year, we're starting a little bit later than usual in our initial presentation, and I'm very pleased, because so many times when we do the kickoff, I feel like I'm telling you, well, we're waiting for this piece of information, or the state hasn't released that piece of information, and there's just a lot of uncertainty in the numbers because we're trying to roll it out so early. So this timeline at the end of February really helps address those issues, so you'll see a whole lot fewer examples of, more on that to come. This is our rollout where the figures that we're presenting show the revenue estimates as of the current date, and for our expenditures, it's what we call our baseline budget. So it assumes that we are not changing anything in the overall program. Programs that are here are just rolled forward using the contractual rates that will be in place, and pricing impacts on multi-year contracts perhaps that are in place. It's really kind of a status quo presentation. And then as we roll through the coming weeks of budget review, and each department presents their areas, that's when they will talk about proposed changes in their programs, either streamlining or changing things, or in some instances, asking for additional funding for priorities for their department. So that information will be coming to you in future weeks. The state aid estimates came to us in early February when the governor released his budget numbers. I know there was a lot of buzz in the community, because if you looked at the state aid runs, it showed this phenomenal 10% increase in our aid. That was not correct. I feel like a broken record many times when I say you can't take the numbers exactly as they appear on the governor's aid runs. What we have to do is adjust them. Many times, the aid estimates that the governor puts forth are based on projections that don't really come to pass. The majority of our aid is coming to us based on expense reimbursement. So every year, when those runs come out, it takes some analysis of what is being proposed, and we look at what our actual expenditures will be, and we adjust those numbers. There are inevitably variations. For instance, this year, our 15, 16 budget in total is 25.5 million in aid, and we will be very close to hitting that, but there are fluctuations in the individual line items. So for instance, transportation, where we budgeted 4.5 million, that actual number is going to be coming in below that. It's going to be closer to 4.1 million. So it appears like there's a decrease in aid, but really, it's just an adjustment in the actual numbers. The big difference on the governor's aid run when it came out that generated that 10% increase was because the building aid numbers that were reflected on the runs did not include the aid that is coming to us on the completion of the $20 million capital project that we just wrapped up. The governor's numbers were taken from reports that were generated in November. Our final cost reports were not required to be submitted until December. Now, if you look at the state output reports, they've all been adjusted, and the numbers match the $7.2 million that we have on there. But that's just so you have an example of the types of differences that you'll see on those reports. So we took the projected aid numbers for 16, 17, and we made adjustments to them to reflect what we realistically expect to yield, particularly for those expense-based aids. We were pleased to see that there was some restoration on the gap elimination adjustment. 614,000, there was talk of either fully eliminating it due to an improvement in the state's finances, or possibly eliminating it over the course of two years. Obviously, if we're getting about 30% back this year, that leaves a big chunk of money that would be coming to us next year. We're certainly hopeful that as the governor and the legislature works through the budget, that we see additional monies coming to us. But at this point, we're looking at a budget-to-budget increase of about $646,000, so that's what's in the baseline, and we will adjust that once we get word on what is included in the final budget. We are still in a tax cap world. I did show mercy on everybody this year, and I abbreviated the slides on the calculations. You don't need to see the line by line of the two pages of slides on that. Bottom line is the maximum allowable tax levy, the Mattel, is 1.45% this year, which generates $919,000 in taxes if the board approves a levy increase at that level. The inflation factor, which is that allowable levy growth factor, that received a lot of press because the inflation rate is so low this year, in fact, the lowest since the tax cap regulations came into play, and that was at a .12%. So that did not help us by adding much to the levy. Of course, a lot of the expenditures that we have are not necessarily tied directly to the CPI, so fortunately, it's only one factor in the many that we use. The factor where we had a surprising benefit this year was in the tax base growth factor, and that's what's known as the brick and mortar component, and that's a reflection on actual growth in the assessment base within the community from one year to the next. So that was at .88%, which was the most that we've seen thus far. So those two elements combined yielded another 1% in the levy, which is about 634,000. We had an increase in our payments in lieu of taxes. Those are payments that come to us through agreements with developers, and when those monies increase, that's a deduct on the tax cap levy amounts, so that actually reduced it about $100,000. Because of the new capital project, there is an increase of about $389,000 in the capital exemption line, and that's really a reflection of the local share that the district provides for any capital projects that are done. So those are the elements that make up that increase for the 919,000, if we go to the Mattel at 1.45%. Remember that this past year, we were in the second year of the governor's tax efficiency program, and this year is really, was supposed to be the final year for that, for this past budget that was adopted, the current year that we're in. Because we adopted a budget that was in compliance with the tax cap requirements, and because we were able to submit an efficiency plan that showed that we had saved sufficient amounts of money in excess of 1% of the tax levy, that qualified residents to receive the rebate that came out a few months ago. There's one other piece of that rebate that is coming out at some point, and that is the last piece of this portion of the rebate regulations, and that relates to the January property tax payments that everybody made. There's a modification to the rebate program going forward, and this was adopted in last year's rules in 2015, and it covers us through 2019, and what they're calling it is the STAR rebate program. There are a number of proposed changes to how the STAR tax credits or assessment exemptions are working. Those have not been finalized, so I don't really want to spend time talking about that tonight. I'll cover that once the budget is enacted and we see what that looks like. But assuming you still are qualifying for that STAR exemption, if you're earning less than 200,000 and the district adapts, adopts a budget that is tax cap compliant at the 1.45 or less, then the homeowners will qualify for a $185 rebate. So there's still something, but it's not at the levels that had been in place previously. And I'm thinking that's likely to cause a lot of confusion in the community, so we'll be prepared to answer those questions. The summary of our revenues, basically, the resources that we have available to fund our program expenses. The school taxes in the baseline, we always show at last year's level. We don't make any presumption on what the ultimate level of the increase will be. Our pilot payments that I had mentioned earlier are going up about $100,000, so that helped to reduce the total allowable tax levy. Our state aid number is the 26.2. Again, we hope to be able to adjust that if there is some additional restoration in GEA or in foundation aid, which are two of our priorities with concerns. Our other revenues consist of a multitude of different line items. That total is down somewhat. That includes charges that we collect from other districts, that's interest income, rental of property, and things of that nature. So the total revenue without allowing for other increases is about $94.4 million. We could grow potentially up to a high of just under $96.7 million, and that will be fully dependent on what choice is made with the tax levy and what degree of restoration on state aid funding we may see. On our expenditures, overall, we have about a 1.62% increase in the baseline without contemplating any other changes in the program. The salaries number is up only about 2.39%, and while the increases that are part of the underlying collective bargaining agreements are a little bit higher than that, every year we have retirements, and those retirements allow us to bring in staff at lower salary levels. So that moderation in the rate of growth is really a reflection of retirements that we had either last year or earlier this year that allow us to help keep that percentage growth in salaries to a lower number. I didn't make a typo on the benefits. This is one of those very rare years where, in fact, there is a reduction in benefits. I'll provide some additional details in coming slides on that, but it's primarily from reductions in the ERS and the TRS pension contribution rates and favorable rates on our health insurance. Debt service numbers are as they are, were expected to be, based on the projections. There's essentially an uptick from the capital project, finalizing that and having that bond payment fully in place. And then there's also a half-year allotment for the new energy performance contracts, which, assuming the approvals come through from the state and we move forward with that, we should have about a half-year impact on the budget next year. Our BOSI services and then equipment supplies and contractual numbers, when taken together, are relatively flat. We do tend to see variations from one year to the next, and that is a function of, largely driven by placements for our driven by placements for our special education students. Sometimes we're able to draw on BOSI services to provide that. Sometimes we need to rely on other private sources of funding, so again, you'll see fluctuations, but in total, it's been relatively stable. Fringe benefits, down 1.24%. The health insurance, I want to start with that. We are looking at a net increase in our overall rates at only 2.23%. We actually had a reduction in our Blue Shield premium. I have never seen a reduction in health insurance rates from one year to the next, and I've been working in finance for well over 20 years. And it's, I think, a reflection, we did have great experience with the plan and utilization in the coming year, and we were able to lower that portion of the rates by 2.9%. And we have just under 50% of our employees who have opted with the Blue Shield plan. We have the balance of our employees with CDPHP. That premium is increasing, but only by 3.03%. So effectively, the two plans cancel one another out with the increase on one and decrease on the other. We are continuing to get some pressure on our prescription drug costs with the specialty drugs that are part of the landscape these days. That is driving an increase of about 9% in the prescription drug component, but because that's only about 25% of the overall premium, that's where we're able to still show that lower 2.23%. So overall, very good news on our largest component of the fringe benefit costs. TRS and ERS, the TRS rates are down about 1.5%. The ERS rate's down about 2.7%. That's applied to all of our employees. We have about $30 million in payroll associated with the TRS plan and about $14 million in ERS. So even a 1% reduction yields a huge savings to the district on those fringe benefit costs. All of the other fringe benefits are relatively stable. The workers' comp and miscellaneous line has increased somewhat. That's a reflection of anticipating additional retirements, and there are benefits that are paid out upon retirement, so we've provided a reserve for that. So a large number, but very moderate growth on that. You can see for our teachers' retirement system and the employees' retirement system, where two years ago, we were looking at close to 20% on those rates. They have come down quite a bit over recent years. Those rates are all a function of how is the stock market doing, and therefore, what are the underlying plan values held by the pension systems? And then how does our accrued value of future pension benefits liability equate to the money that's on hand to fund that? And that's how they derive the rates, and it's about $6 million in total that we would need to pay for those benefits. Debt service obligations, good news on this slide. The 1997 projects where we have 1.2 million in debt service in the 16, 17 budget year, that is the last year of debt service for that. So next year, you'll see that falling off the chart. And while we still have the 0309, that was the $93 million bond project, is the largest share of the debt service numbers. We have started doing smaller projects with the approval of the $20 million project, and that will be bonded officially for this coming year, and we're looking at just under 1.6 million for that. I touched on the energy performance bond previously. Again, relatively stable numbers with the debt service. Remember that these numbers are what yield the building aid that comes to the district. So it's funded as a percentage of our qualifying debt service. So with those baseline totals on expenditures and revenues, we are looking at one of the smallest initial gaps that you have seen in many years on the budget, just under $1.3 million. If the maximum allowable tax levy is rendered at 1.45%, generating that $919,000, that drops the gap down to about $361,000. So on a $90 million budget, we should be able to close that with the work that we will have before us in the coming week, or coming weeks. We will not be looking at dramatic program reductions. There are no anticipated reductions in staff based on fiscal needs. If there are any adjustments, it will be just a reflection of the program and changes within the needs driven by student needs. We will be able to consider some of the budget requests that the individual departments will make, depending largely on what will we see in terms of our GEA restoration. So if that funding comes in, we should be able to further enhance the programs. But again, we won't know that until the budget is actually adopted, so a few more weeks to go with that. There will be some higher priority staffing additions that are going to be recommended, and those, we are hoping we can fund to a large extent with additional breakage as part of the budget. So we will be able to fine-tune those numbers as we go into the coming weeks and review that, but all in all, a relatively stable picture. As part of the budget process, we always update our multi-year budget forecast. We really find that with a longer-term view, it helps us with the overall fiscal management. We know, no matter what, every year, we're going to come up with a balanced budget and a responsible spending plan. But we do want to know if there's some kind of a freight train coming down the road at us, so that's why we do these projections. We factor in what we know in terms of pilot increases. We assume about a 2% increase in state aid from one year to the next. We look at our expenditures, again, make our projections based on what we know relative to debt service. We project out our fringe benefits as a percentage of salaries, and we look at what that gap is. You can see that the gap is increasing, were we not to take any other action to adjust the program. But with a tax levy increase of about 2% a year, that does help largely address that gap or fund that gap. So you're looking at relatively minor amounts that wouldn't need to be adjusted within the budget going forward. Of course, we always have our fund balance as an option if we need as well. I meant to highlight that for you earlier on our revenue slide. That's what's different this year. You did not see a use of fund balance. In this year's budget, we did not need to draw upon the fund balance, and that was the goal that we were trying to get to over many years, where we can say that we have been able to balance the budget without dipping into those reserves. So we try to keep that at around 4%, or just below the 4% level. That's what our limitation is by law, and that's very important because that's what we can turn to if the unexpected happens and we need to draw upon a funding resource. So we're stable. I really can't tell you that I see any serious concerns on the horizon with the overall finances. Obviously, we'll keep an eye on it, and we'll report on it regularly and make any adjustments that we need to as we go forward. And once we actually adopt the budget at the tail end of this process, we'll go through and we'll update this multi-year forecast as well, so that we always are using the latest information available to us. So the schedule for our future meetings, next week, remember, because we shifted our meeting, we've got another, I know you're excited, another budget presentation only one week from tonight, and that's where we'll cover our non-instructional areas, transportation, operations, maintenance, and technology. And then the following meeting, we'll look at athletics and special ed and student services, followed lastly by the instructional program. And then from there, we'll have our meetings to discuss and make those final decisions. We have candidate petitions that are due April 18th by 5:00. We will have a meet-the-candidate night on May 3rd, public hearing on the 4th, and then all leading up to the big budget vote from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on May 17th. So that is the schedule. Additional details will be coming in the coming weeks. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those.
I'll just make a comment on page 12, where you indicate that the gap may be $361,000. I remember years when the gap was $7 million. So we've come a long way, largely in part of the savings, the district, the efforts of the staff, and to develop budgets that results in a significant savings and the support of the community. So I just want to comment on that.
Thank you.
And I will now open questions. Christine, go ahead.
I had a question. If we don't receive any of the gap elimination money, we would have a negative 361 if we were to go for the 1.45%. Would we look at fund balance for that, or would we, what would?
We will have a series of choices that we're going to need to make, because remember, we're going to have departments who will be sharing their requests for additional funding. There may be some areas where we can reduce other funding to offset that. We will have to look and see what our choices are. Obviously, we will prioritize what those requests for additions are, and, you know, if we decide that we want to add more than we have available with the state aid, we might want to consider using a little bit of the fund balance. You hear the hesitation in my voice. I mean, that's always a caution.
Well, you had it on the forecast slide, so I just, it wasn't on this slide as an option, so I just wanted to clarify.
It's an option, but to be used with discretion.
Sure, and I think as the budget gets built, it's always a recommendation, but ultimately, the board has to decide how to either close a gap, add to the gap, et cetera, tax, yes. Do you have other questions?
Yep, that's it.
I just have a quick question on the multi-year slide, slide 13. So what, on the revenue numbers, what does that assume for the GEA? Does that assume?
It assumes a flat 2% increase in state aid. So again, remember, that's going to vary depending on the expense-based aids. It's not an unreasonable assumption on an average year.
I honestly think we're going to get a little bit more of GEA. I, I'm not sure what the three or four men in the room will decide, what they bargain and negotiate on. We may lose in other ways, I'm not really sure, but I think we will get more, at least with the GEA.
And even to get up to the 50% level would be another $376,000, almost $400,000, which is a huge amount of money in terms of funding our resources. So it is important, I know we do have the advocacy information on our webpage, so we're hoping that the community's voices, I know our voices are sharing what our needs are and how our programs can benefit with that funding. So, and ultimately, when you get the state aid, you saw the shift when Jody had done her presentation. You have less state aid, it means a higher local burden in terms of the taxes. So any relief that we can get on those aid numbers helps reduce that burden.
I have a question. On page eight, where you, summary of expenditures, the 2016, '17 number on salaries, we're currently in a negotiation for the teacher contract. How, how did you get that projection, given that the contract hasn't been settled? How does that factor in, the number?
Whether or not the contract is settled, under New York state law, the terms of the existing contract carry forward, so the projection assumes that the same salary scales and the same rate of increases will be in effect, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm just going to mention, only because we talked about this the other night at my BOSI's board meeting, you know, under, on that same slide with BOSI services, which include other things like textbook, technology, a lot of technology aid, and BOSI says apply to state ed for COSER on using the smart funds as a regional type experience so that districts would be able to, you know, to purchase the materials en masse, so to speak, you know, through BOSI.
Leverage that purchasing power, yeah.
Right, increase the purchasing power for everyone, so we may be able to actually to purchase more than maybe what Sal has originally thought about to purchase. They, he has, they haven't received it yet, but probably, I can't see why they, state ed wouldn't approve that. COSER is a cooperative service agreement among districts so that could save money, basically.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to item seven, recognition of visitors who wish to address the board on one of the agenda items. If you would please come forward and use the microphone. You can either increase the height of the stand or...
For everybody, so if it...
You can either take it off the stand or raise it.
Hi, I'm Jill Doyle. I'm the president of the B.C. Swim and Dive Booster Club, and the next item, a finance committee, finance agenda is being voted on the next phase three of the pool. And I just wanted to share with you that it's being recommended that the starting blocks at the pool be refurbished and not replaced. So I shared with the board some changes in starting block design over the past probably 20 years. Our existing starting blocks have a single bar for a backstroke start, not a two-hand hold, so there's a horizontal and a vertical hold as opposed to just a horizontal. In addition, our handholds are a single loop, they're not a full length. And then the third change is a back, a track start ledge that will be used next week at the state championship meet in Buffalo. We don't, so by refurbishing our existing blocks, we're not giving our athletes the opportunity to have what is currently available. So I would just like the board to consider that when they're voting on the agenda item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps when we get to that item, I might ask if there's any comment from our director of facilities on that, anyone else, a comment on an agenda item? No? Okay, so we're moving to item number eight, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance items, actions, items A through E. Can I have a first and a second, please?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, there, this is under E, the pool area reconstruction project. I don't know if Mr. Nolte wants to comment on that at all, or if the board has any additional questions based on what was just presented.
Well, I would like to hear Mr. Nolte's response.
We can consider new starting blocks. That was actually one of the alternates that we put in. I think it was alternate, let me see, GC2, okay? The low bidder put in an alternate price of $19,000 for those. The project came in over budget. I am proposing that we fund the base bid with operating monies for that project, or at least for the base bid. If the board wants to consider, you know, additional monies for new starting blocks, our investigation, single pole starting blocks, they're around, they're at many schools. Yes, there are two support starting blocks, there's new technologies with the starting blocks. When we're looking at the design of this, what is, what is involved with the refurbishment? Basically, it's an entire new top, it's a new step, it's basically the only thing that we're keeping of the old starting block is the single pole that we have existing, okay? They last the same amount of years, and that was, with the refurbishment, we're saving about $9,000, and that's what we considered value engineering when we first were designing the project. So that's kind of, you know, if the board wants to consider further monies.
My only concern on that is this pool work we've been doing in phases as part of the capital outlay component of the budget, and each year, we've taken an estimated piece that would get us close to that $100,000. So while Greg was looking at and evaluating the type of work that was required, the pool seemed to be the area that was right-sized for that. We get building aid on that, there's a certain timeline that we have to hit relative to that. In designing that project and in the work that Greg had done with our architects and
and in consultation with the athletic director and with the coaches on that, the design that was included in the base bid specifications that we put out there included the refurbishment of those starting blocks. So, you know, if the, if the request had come in sooner perhaps, it might have been easier to, to consider that. We can't really carve that alternates from the bid. I mean, we put it out as the main bid specification. We got sealed bids back. We're trying to remain in compliance with all of the general municipal law purchasing requirements on that. So in fact, the Bonacquisti Brothers was the low bidder on the main package. They responded to the specs as we had put them out there through using due diligence on what to include in there. So I hear the comments that this option, the different style of the starting blocks may be more desirable. But I guess I would want to weigh, is the enhancements from those blocks worth the potential cost to the district? Were we to, if we decide not to award this in accordance with the bid specs and the bidding process, you basically set back your ability to do this project on this timeline for this year. So you can't just pull out those pieces based on how we had bid it.
I have a good question. So just to kind of translate that, I guess I'm a little confused. Because it was an alternate in the, in the project that went to State Ed, right? Would we, if we made a change where we decided to do the alternate piece, the non-refurbished, would we have to go back to State Ed and start all over?
And it's not directly State Ed-related. State Ed hasn't gotten, they've approved moving forward with this. We will have to submit those plans to them. The issue is really how we had designed the bid specs and put them out there. So, and, and the reason you put alternates on your bid specification is so that if the bids come back lower than expected, you can maximize the work that you get done, basically right-size it for that $100,000. So if the bids came in much lower than we expected, that's when you would go through to the alternate. So for instance, the first alternate was to put in a handicap accessible equipment for the project. We didn't have that luxury of considering those alternates because the bids came in higher than we expected, higher than the $100,000. So in order to accomplish even just the base package, Greg needed to identify other resources within his budget to cover that as well, so.
Yeah, the issue was.
But if you could, if you wanted to, could you add the extra money without having to go back through?
Without a delay.
Without a delay. I'm just asking.
The issue is money here, not design, okay? So the question is, do you want to spend? The refurbished blocks, okay, under base bid, meet the regulations and, and, you know, and the, anything that is required for, you know, a high school pool, okay? Are there better ones? Are there ones that have different designs that certain swimmers like better than others? You go online and you, you type them up and there's all these single post mounts and there's these double mounds, and they have all these different things. And so yes, we can, we can spend. If you want to spend $19,000 more for that, if that is worth it. You know, we talked to our coaches, we talked to our athletic director. And again, trying to get the most bang for our money, one of the reasons why we went with refurbished, because the, the, the life expectancy of a refurbished block is as long as a brand-new one, okay? So.
I guess that's what I was trying to get to, like, as long as the coaches and the athletic director, this is what they recommend. I just hate to have us put in something to save the money now to only change it up in the next couple of years because it's not meeting.
One of the things, and in consultation, just as an example, you know, we've been doing this pool project for a while. This is phase three. As you hear, next week, we're going to be recommending a phase four. There was a number of projects identified initially a long time ago when we first started this. I think it was over a million dollars of recommendations. So we've been picking away at this. One of the things that came up was the scoreboard, okay? That was on the list, but not high on the list, but, you know, with some of the sporadism and the importance of having an operable and scoreboard, we actually put that as part of the project. Now, part of that project, too, is new touchpads and these judging relay, basically, that you put on the starting blocks that basically gives them an opportunity to figure out if there was any false starts. That is not a requirement. However, in Len, Len's investigation, he thinks that that may be coming down suburban council-wise, maybe down the road. So we're getting this new timing system. It's not a big deal to add this to the system. And so that's, we included that in our base bid.
It also sounds like there are additional alternates that if we were to consider this, I would like to see, for example, a handicap accessible equipment would be something that I would, you know, we have, we'd have, I would suggest we consider the entire list if we're going to reconsider this at all so that we, the board can make the decision on which is appropriate. And I'm very mindful of when, when someone said, I think someone said to Judy, "Would you add the money?" It's whether we would add the money. So we have to be mindful of that, so.
Yeah, I think, understand too, that anything above this $100,000 mark, we do not get aid on, okay? So, you know, anything that we add is going to be completely out of our pocket, okay? So it is my intention, and you'll hear this next, next week, that my phase four is going to be to purchase that lift. And actually, we have some issues with the diving boards, which we're aware of. So, you know, that's part of the proposals for next.
So I think we should be lobbying to the state to increase the capital outlay up to maybe a $250,000 project. I mean, it's, we're trying to fit it within, you know, the identified work that needs to be done and maximizing the aid that can come to us for the project.
Christine.
The question I have is, what is the benefit of the two different hardholds for the backstroke start? And is there a significant difference? Is it a time issue? Are, I mean, do you know the answer to that? I don't know.
I'm sorry, I.
There's the two different hard, handholds for the backstroke. I think that's what the issue is, that this new design doesn't have?
No, I don't know.
He's not a swim coach, but it sounds like the swim coach did endorse that the refurbished model.
The architects hired, you know, they, they worked with our pools or their pool professionals and consultants to come up with this.
So if we were to start all over again, then this, we would lose out on obviously the opportunity, right?
Well, we don't, because we came in over budget, I mean, we could redesign. We could reduce the scope, so we come in within, within our budget. But we don't have time to do that. This project has to be constructed, constructed, built out, completed by June 30th in order for us to submit aid, submit for aid. It's a very tight time schedule. SED actually was very good in, in reviewing the project for us. But it's extremely tight.
Just one clarification. So the, because you said it was a $19,000 difference, but you also said nine. Is nine the difference between the cost of the refurbished blocks and the cost of new blocks?
Yeah, if we were to just go and buy blocks, okay? New starting blocks, you know, depending upon which one you're picking, can be about $4,000 plus or minus each, okay? Refurbished blocks are about $2,500. Okay, so with the six blocks that we have, that's where we came up with the, you know, a general cost of about $9,000.
Okay, so that's the net difference.
Well, the contractors, contractors play games. Now, if you see the range of base bids, we go from $105,000 to $170,000. You go from this alternate, you had a contractor submit $100 for new starting blocks. You had another contractor submit $20,000.
No, no, I get what you're saying, but I was just trying to get a sense. I guess my assumption, and we don't have the swim coaches here, but if they're using something at states, I would be willing to bet it's, it's the, probably the better design for the athletes. And I know this kind of came late and this is kind of hard to do. But I guess from my vantage point, of all the improvements to the pool, in my mind, the ones that are the most important are, of course, safety issues. But secondarily, would be things that the athletes themselves directly benefit from. This sounds like one of those. And, you know, I think it's probably worthy at some point. And I'm kind of sharing Diane's sort of crystal ball of, you know, in three years, we could be, all the suburban council schools could be, you know, moving to this. And all of a sudden, we're saying, geez, remember those refurbished blocks? Well, now we want to keep up with our competitors. And here we are looking at doing this. So while the timing doesn't work, maybe it's worth the time to kind of, you know, if it's not going to delay everything and we could do it without, you know, a big disruption. I don't know. That's just kind of my thoughts.
Well, the states, though, at Buffalo, I think, I believe, at least they always used to be, at Erie County Community College, it's that college that they have these, not high school.
Right. No, I understand.
So I think most high school students, probably, athletes are using, you know, what we have.
No, no, I understand that. My point is, at some point, the high school pressure, or the college pressure kind of moves down into the high school level. And the high schools could be in five years or three years be saying, oh, you know, it's time for us to replace our blocks and we're going to either refurbish or get a better design to create advantage for our athletes. So I'm kind of going to Diane's point of, you know, I don't want to be sitting here in five years if we're all sitting here saying, geez, we should have taken the opportunity because it would have been smarter. That's my point.
I just say so many times that we do that. We go ahead and do something and we have to change it up. I've always gone by, let's do the right thing the right, you know, the first time. If it's the right thing. Can we, if, I mean, can we still vote on this? And, you know, talk to the swim coaches that makes, you know, because I, they're the ones that put these proposals in, right? The coaches, the people that are doing it?
Yeah, so we were relying on the architects, their pool experts, and then also in talking with our own staff on it. So it seemed to be a design that was supported broadly, which is why it was included in the initial specs, so.
But were they doing it to save on the money, or were they doing it because this, that's what they wanted? I guess that's kind of what.
Yeah, I guess I want to hear more information. I think with the new information that's come to light, I wouldn't feel comfortable just saying, yes, it's okay to go ahead. I don't want to spend extra money, but yeah, I don't want to put something in that might not be there five years from now. I just, I don't have a comfort level right now to say that it's the right decision.
But just to clarify, because it sounds like we may have to have another meeting on this, just, or additional information. But you're saying the life, the life expectancy of.
Useful life, period of probable usefulness is the phrase you're looking for.
Of the brand-new one is the same. Is that what you were saying?
We're getting into design, I guess, desires. And is there a thought that maybe down the road, this is going to be required by suburban council? All right. Never came up in any indications with the athletic director or the coaches. What potentially came up was, was a potential starting judge, part of the timing system, where they actually stand on a sensing mat, basically.
So it sounds like you weighed what was the most pressing and the most needed, giving their, given.
Well, the information that was provided to us by our, by the users.
I still wouldn't mind talking to the coach.
I mean, we can still accept this. And if they want to change it, we can change the type of thing they, no? Do a change order? We do them all the time.
This is not a change order.
There's a cost, because then the change order would be additional cost.
I think we have 30 days, so we could award base bid and then at a later board meeting, award alternate one, if it's within that 30, possibly.
I mean, we have another meeting next week. Does one week between now and then allow sufficient time? Is there a hard and fast date that we have to make the award per the bid specs that were put out there? Or do we miss the timeline? I know the timeline is a big concern in terms of getting the work started. And then it has to be completed by June 30th. And again, this is one piece of the much larger project. So I hear the concerns. Obviously, we, we value the relationship and the support with the boosters. I mean, that's been a longstanding partnership. They've supported the program. You know, the intent is not to be creating issues. It, to me, seems like a difference in the request for the type of blocks that are, are used. I think the blocks that are part of the specs do meet the needs of the district for the, for, they're not fitting what Mrs. Doyle has, has requested. But again, we've consulted with the AD and with the coaches and, you know, what's included in the spec and what we had recommended for award is in line with those, those requests.
Well, what's the 30 days, then? You just said we had 30 days, so we could kind of.
Usually bids are.
And we have a week, a meeting next week. Is there time to do some evaluation and toss it around?
I guess, what's, what do, what are you looking for? Confirmation from the athletic director and the coach?
Well, I mean, we don't have a swim coach here. I would love to, you know.
Well, I'm saying, do you want, is that what you're looking for? Confirmation from the coach and the AD that this is what they're in agreement with? To support the awarding of bid?
I think just to hear about the enhancement that the additional, I think the different platforms would give the athletes and if it's a minimal amount, is it something we should look at?
And if it's a wise investment at this point versus, you know, I, I mean, I keep kind of thinking about, you know, we've spent a lot on this, so I don't want to prolong this, but I keep thinking about the, you know, in three years or five years, you know, I don't want to be in a position where, you know, all the suburban council schools are moving toward this technology and we're going to be saying, oh, geez, we should have done that when we were investing in the refurbishment. So I guess, you know, I don't want to kind of micromanage this, but we haven't, we don't have the benefit of the coach or the AD in this discussion. I understand that they were part of an earlier discussion. And maybe it's worth having, and if we have the time to do it, which Greg kind of sounds like we do.
So could we hold the awarding of the bid till next week's meeting? And that would allow some confirmation from the AD and the coach about that? Would that be, okay?
Is that what the board wants?
Is that what the board wants to do?
I'm looking to have her.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would like that, just to, I mean, if they're, if they're thinking of putting in what they, the refurbish to save the money, not, you know, or to end up, I understand that, but.
Right, but I'd say if we want some additional information, that's fine. But every coach can come here and say, I would want the state of the, I mean, every team cannot get every state-of-the-art thing that they want because it would be just unfair. And we're still waiting for, you know, has the new lighting been put on the basketball courts? Because if that's the new lighting, I mean, it's.
But I'm not hearing it's state-of-the-art.
Is that the new lighting?
Which school? Here?
Yeah, the high school. Yeah, okay, thank goodness. But anyway.
But I'm not hearing it's state-of-the-art. I'm hearing that it may end up changing down the road. And then we're just putting, putting money in.
Okay, I was hearing, like, this is, this is better because we, we think that it's going to get kids to states. And there's lots of different adjustments for every single team that could increase performance incrementally or perhaps larger. We, we don't have an unlimited pot of money. So I'm just putting that out, that any team could say, we need this in order to get our kid to state. We need this to get the extra inch or extra couple of seconds off the track time or whatever.
I know, that's not what I'm saying, though.
Mine is more like we're going to spend $9,000 in two years. I'm going to take those up and have to get these.
I'm inclined to stay in budget. I think it's important. That's what they were shooting for. They wanted.
Yeah, they were consulting.
So you, you have one option. I mean, if, the other question you have to ask is if the coaches want it, do you want to fund another $19,000 for this project? Or do we delete the starting blocks in this project, okay? Which would be a credit, okay? And then we just include it in next year's, which is.
Can you do that?
Right around the corner, yeah.
I just want to hear rationale of why this was select, the refurbishment was selected by the coach. I guess that would give me a comfort level. If they say, you know, we're, we're very familiar with the platforms, we're comfortable with this, then I'm completely okay with that.
Just in the design process, there was never an indication that our existing starting blocks and the style of them need to be changed or that down the road, things are going to be changed, you know, that it's going to be a regulation. What came up was the judging platform, okay, for false starts. That might happen down the road, so that made sense to include that, okay? But nothing else was identified to Len or myself, so. But we can confirm confirmation of that.
I'd be curious if anybody else has them. I know North, Shaker doesn't. I'm trying to think, you know, if any other suburban council districts. I know Shen put in that nice complex. But I haven't been up there to see it, so I mean.
And it was raised as an issue, so I just want to make sure that we do our due. And it was raised as an issue, so I just want to make sure that we do our due diligence before we make a decision on it since it was brought to our attention.
Could maybe Len also provide information about how many other schools, at least the suburban council?
Well, that's what I was, that's what I just asked, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so do we want to make a motion then to remove this one from the agenda?
Can we just approve everything with the exception of that?
Say again?
Can we approve everything with the exception of that letter?
I would just take E out. Yeah, the whole thing, the whole, the whole thing.
Yeah, no, that's what I.
So I need a motion to remove E from the agenda. First and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all, any, we already have discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that's, so now it becomes finance items, number eight, items A through D. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion?
Just a quick thank you for these, because these are wonderful donations, the green team, thanks Mark for all your work, and, you know, the other donations for the art department, I mean, just wonderful.
Sure, and I will make sure that a letter goes out from, with Mr. Downey's signature, thanking each of the donors for their support.
Yeah, Mr. Wing is very generous, in fact, we have a STEM advisory committee meeting next Tuesday, I believe. He's donated quite a bit, so.
All right, did we take the vote yet? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries. We're on to item number nine, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items A through C. So motion?
So moved.
First and a second, any discussion?
I think it's A through, you said A through D? I just want to.
No, A through C.
I have A through D.
I have D, I have a D on mine.
I have A through C.
Point one, physical.
Was that one added? Okay, sorry. Okay, so items A through D.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That carries. All right, item number 10, support personnel actions. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through G.
So moved.
Motion please for a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No, that carries. Item number 11, other action items, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the following action item A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
That's first and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That carries. And we're now at item 12. By the way, we're right on target to end at nine, so bear with us. It's recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. Okay, so we move on to the listing on, under 13, future meetings and events. There is a Board of Education meeting next Wednesday. So we have back-to-back Wednesdays, 6 o'clock anticipated executive session, 7 o'clock regular board meeting here. On Wednesday, March 16th is our, again, a regular board meeting, anticipated executive session at 6, regular board meeting at 7, again, at the high school here. And then Wednesday, April 6th, at 6:00 PM, anticipated executive session, 7 o'clock regular board meeting here. There is no need to go into executive session, oh, hang on, I'm going to announce something else here. In terms of those other meetings, the budget calendar was already given by Mrs. Keigho's presentation. However, the Board of Education candidate petitions are available as of Monday from the Educational Services Center here in the high school. There are two seats up for election, one held by Mr. Cooper currently and one by Ms. Diane Giakona Stever.
I'm not going to be running again.
So there are still two seats up, and one will be not being run for by the incumbent. So anyone interested should contact either, I think, is it Mrs. Barrett? Ms. Barrett at the Edu, or just contact the Educational Services Center at 700 Delaware Ave. And the due date for those, you mentioned before, Judy, do you remember?
April 18th, is it?
Yeah, I think it was.
It was usually 30 days before the.
And about 64 signatures are needed from community members in order to get your name on the ballot. Okay, there is no need for going into executive session.
I just have a question, that, is that Wednesday, April 6th, or Tuesday? Was that meeting going to be on Tues?
That's April.
In April?
Tuesday, April 5th, Tuesday.
Tuesday, April 5th, because we have the, both these annual meeting on the 6th.
And April 18th were the candidate petition due date.
Okay, thank you. So that, what's, and the agenda is incorrect then, so it says Wednesday, April 6th, it should say Tuesday, April 5th. Okay, so just make sure that, on the minutes, that that's reflected, please, thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
That's first and second. We are adjourned. Yes, pig students, if you could come up and sign both the rosters, and if you need a board member's signature, any of the six board members.